So this one-
Three's in, Dr. Pedro.
Two hour.
Half hour more.
I want to brief you on the 2013 CID plan. We have remaining authority from the 2003 election. This is about fourteen million, two hundred and ten thousand. For Southwest's recommendation is that we sell all of that this year. As the sooner the better, they basically told us their issue or concern is that, I think the interest rates are currently at an all time low and could start creeping up at some point in time. They're worried about trying to split it into multiple years because two years from now the interest rates could be substantially different. Their recommendation is if you can get it sold, get it sold. And they've done some analysis and they believe that we can get that done. We can structure that debt accordingly where we maintain our rate of the current rate of eleven seven thirty-two or eleven. So assuming that we were to do that this spring, what would we use the money on? Basically, the projects that we have left from that original 2003 election are almost still entirely in Old Town. Now, using the Milton Street concept in Old Town, which is redoing streets by keeping the streets within the existing right of way. Asphalt, if it's asphalt street, concrete, curb and gutter. So the model here is Milton Street. Modified drainage where feasible, not a full blown storm drainage system, but a modified drainage system where that curb and gutter all goes up point of some kind and maybe gets to a ditch line somewhere, but eventually it gets drain. And whatever water sewer line replacements are associated with that street. Using that standard, we've priced out some of these locations in the Old Town area. The first one is the Northwest Old Town area, which would be Harrod, Hatcher, Walters, Richland, Edna, Lynn, the Gannon Temple. It costs them about three point two million. That's an approximation.
Are we ever getting that way for any?
That's assuming we're not getting any right away.
Okay.
Operating within the existing right of way.
Okay.
So it's going to be a sub, quote, substandard design that you're going to come up with. It's not going to have as much space, space to operate with what you got, trying to get the utilities out of the way to where you can. Maybe the sidewalks are flooded up against the curb. Maybe there's not any sidewalks. There's going to be a lot of, quote, sacrifices in order to operate within the existing right of way on these narrow, pre- four or five two streets.
Yeah, it's what you said, it was true. So you're saying that basically you want to try to do sidewalks on some, because some of these places don't have sidewalks.
Well, in some cases, if we can get them in, try to get them-
You got room.
Because I would like that room.
The problem is, if somebody had been on-
You may get them on one side and not the other side.
Somebody's had them on council and the problem is when you, if you're going to say this, not just in Old Town, but this is where we've had the problem. It's one place we really had to do it against. No, we didn't want them on the other side too. But when you start trying to widen a street enough to put in sidewalks, whether there are any sidewalks, and still keep your same width of your street, only way you can do that is take somebody's front yards, part of their front yard. They don't want you to do that, period. Even if you offer to buy it. Which we weren't going to buy it for, or say, you need to donate this to the city. We will come in and improve your street, put in nice new sidewalks and this and that. Curb, gutter, everything. I'm telling you, those people don't want it. We had a, we couldn't get fifty percent of the people to do it on-
Racing Street.
Racing Street. We could not get fifty percent of the people to do it.
Even the people who wanted?
Yeah, even the people that came and said, why don't you do this? And I think that-
You don't ever spend money over here.
You mean, you gotta take part of my yard? Just, how else are we going to widen the street and put a curb and gutter to stop them? Well, just forget it, I don't do that.
Well, plus the time and effort to try and get someone on board associated that is just proven to be so difficult with the parts drag and drag and drag to the-
So it's not a case of not wanting-
Very, very effort.
Do a big nice new street with sidewalks. Thing is, it shortens their front yard and that's their domain.
I think the people on Milton Street would be fairly pleased with all that.
Yeah, some people will come to me and ask me about it and I'm going like, I, you know, I'll bring it up, but I'm going to talk to them about what the mayor just said.
I'm going to talk to people, Richard.
Oh, what's your thought?
And all it takes is one or two to stymie the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because you gotta engineer the whole street.
I understand that, but it's like-
Look, a good example is look at the Creek place.
Oh, yeah, look at Timber Creek.
Timber Creek, the, what's that number we're talking about, Duke?
Regent's.
Regent's.
Reeves.
Reeves. Hung up on the one.
How long did that take us to get those, what, eight, ten people? It took us three years, two years just to get them to agree to let us do it. You get fifty people on a street because you got both sides of the street. It's like, they don't want to do it, leave me alone. I like the way my yard is. I don't want to get out of my yard.
So a lot depends on the individual street, the individual right of way. The idea though would be to do as much as you can on some of these old asphalt streets within the existing right of way, make it as improved as possible under the circumstances without buying new right of way. So also the Northwest Old Town, you can see the Northeast Old Town locations at one point five million. And then the McKenzie-Hemery area at three million. McKenzie-Hemery is a little bit unique because a lot of their streets are in much better condition frankly than some of these other locations because they had fairly intensive CBVG work done in two or more years. Still have bar ditches, so they don't have the right, you know, the curb and gutter type of drainage in most cases. But in general, the streets are okay, but if you wanted to go back in there and rehab them the same way as the other streets, it's about a three million dollar price tag. One of the reasons I mentioned that location is because those three areas were basically three areas called out in the bond materials back when the program was structured in 2003.
And so we really do need that.
So, yeah.
Would we have any problem with if a, one of these streets came and said that they had a hundred percent agreement of people on their street to give, to donate the right of way, to improve that street and put the sidewalks? We'd not be okay with doing that, right?
Well, they'd have to know how much they were given. I can't tell them that until we design it.
Well, but I mean, they're going to have to say it.
He's talking about buying it, that people are going to buy into this and do it. Then we can approach that moving forward.
What he's saying is, they're going to say, well, how much my front yard you got to give up? We don't know until we design it. Then when you design it, it might be twenty-five feet. You're like, oh, you're not thinking about being mine?
Then the answer is no. Yeah, then I'm going to spend all this money on designing it.
Well, I mean, I know we want that street to be thirty-one feet wider or whatever, but sometimes you just say parkings.
Yeah, you modify design, which is really what we're talking about here. So, kind of keep that in mind. You've got twenty-five percent add-on if you want to do a concrete option, but then most of these streets are, like, almost all of them are asphalt, aren't they, David?
Yes.
Not that I necessarily want to go that direction, but I have a question about it. So lifetime of concrete versus asphalt?
Well, concrete has a better life-
No, no, what is, give me an algorithm.
Oh, cool. Very conditioned, more associated. Edmonds Lane, south of thirty forty-
I'm looking at my radic street.
Edmonds Lane, south of thirty forty is a concrete street that was installed in roughly nineteen ninety-seven or so, or eight. It lasted less than three years before severe breakages started happening.
What street was it?
So bad. Edmonds Lane, sold over by T.I.
Over by T.I.
But that wasn't about to come.
No, it's a concrete street that just fell apart because of the conditions of its surface, subsurface.
You would have the same problem with an asphalt street. But on-
Similar to that.
It just wasn't done just as you're saying.
Let's go back to typically.
Right.
Okay? Because there's always outliers and they could go either direction. I could get a concrete street and mine lasts a hundred years because nobody travels on it, but I don't know.
Can you help out this, I think?
Well, you know, your concrete street is going to, you're going to have, it's going to perform more evenly because even if you have bad soils, the concrete street, the rigidness the concrete makes up for the fact that you've got the moving soil underneath. Where asphalt, you know, every time the dirt moves underneath, the asphalt moves with it.
So you get the lumps and the rolls and the curve and all that.
So color much longer.
If you've been twenty-five, thirty years on a concrete street, you know, with asphalt, you know, you might be at fifteen or twenty.
Twice.
So we're looking at almost a hundred percent difference.
So over the life of the concrete street, what's the maintenance cost of the asphalt? Now, what's the difference? Because you're giving me twenty-five percent, but that's not looking at over time. That's an upfront. I want to know, what I'm really driving at is, over time, what's my cost?
It'll be much less.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Is that true?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it seems logical to me that it would.
Unless you have some unusual outlier conditions.
What's the cost at the beginning though?
It's very large, a patch of concrete or a asphalt-
Is the concrete asphalt the same?
Than it is to do a concrete panel. And we've got a lot of concrete panel repairs in the city of Louisville. Corporate Drive, Edmonds are good examples of that. But if the concrete lasts, as they was describing, then yes, you will save a lot more money compared to the asphalt repair you'd have to do on the same.
But that same street that you're doing those panels on, if it had been done in asphalt, would have been driven up the wall with maintenance costs too?
Well, I mean, you have a lot of maintenance, but not necessarily as much cost because it's a lot cheaper to throw a bucket of asphalt on a-
Okay, yeah, but enough crews throwing enough buckets of asphalt?
It adds up. It adds up.
Okay, couple of questions here.
Concrete is clearly a preference, anywhere we want to do it.
Couple of questions to get clarified for, let's see, Dave probably has the answer for it. Dave, first off, what is the difference in the price of doing a asphalt street versus a concrete street? Proceeding wise.
Well, I mean, your concrete's going to be a little bit more expensive, you know, probably ten, fifteen, twenty percent at least per unit cost.
Okay.
I mean, you know, right now, it used to be a lot different, but you know, asphalt is catching up a little bit with concrete because of the oil.
Okay. Example, the last Purnell Street, when it went through, it was an asphalt street. The contractor came back and I think it cost us, where it was going to cost us like eight hundred thousand dollars, ended up-
Oh, yeah. Hundred thousand. So it's here at twenty percent.
So about a twenty percent.
Why aren't we talking about asphalt streets?
Because it's cheaper to build them.
Upfront. You just told me what.
It's cheaper to build them? No.
Upfront.
I said right there, it costs twenty-five percent less to build an asphalt street.
They said the cost was almost the same.
Twenty, it's about twenty-five percent cheaper to do asphalt.
But that's not the same. We were just told, that's the question. How much is it to put one in versus from asphalt to concrete? And was, we were told, it's almost the same.
That's over the life.
You know, I think Dave was the-
I think Dave said it's getting to the point where it's not that-
Yeah, it's a lot closer than it used to be. It's still more expensive to do concrete.
That was the question, how much more expensive? Is it twenty-five percent or is it fifty?
We're using Purnell as an example, it was a twenty percent increase to do concrete over asphalt.
Okay. And that's the concrete prices are staying flat and asphalt's going up?
In general, I mean, there's inflation, but the asphalt prices have been rising a lot more than concrete because of the oil.
Okay, so that's happened in the last two years?
Well, in the last probably five, seven, eight years. I mean, it's really gone.
And before that, was it fifty percent more or a hundred percent? It was some number.
Concrete, at the peak, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, concrete was probably fifty percent more than asphalt because of the demand for concrete.
So right now, it's twenty, twenty-five percent more to do a concrete versus asphalt?
And whether it lasts over twice as, or twice as long?
It'll last a lot longer.
So why would we talk about doing asphalt?
Only because these are existing asphalt streets and if you wanted to save the money and do more streets, you can get more streets done for the same amount of money. We have no objection, staff has no problems at all if you want to do less streets for concrete, but add more money to the pot.
Over a twenty to thirty year period, we're saving money.
Yeah, but I'm talking about upfront money. I got to have upfront money to build it.
Right.
Yes.
And I got to know how many I'm going to build.
So Paul's saying that if we want to, as council, if we want to do either, either we keep this pot of money the same, you do concrete versus asphalt, we'll have to do fewer streets, or we can do the same streets with concrete instead of asphalt, we just have to put more money in the pot. So if we want to do that, that's fine, but he needs a regular on-
Do you want to start more? That's all that's issue.
I might add one more thing to that statement though. Over time, you'll be able to do more streets.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying this project right here is what we're looking at right now.
Well, I'd like to look at the future too.
Over time, you've saved considerably on operating cost. Because of the length of the life of the product.
But either way, either way, either way, not even including the future, I know the future you're going to say, but for this project, you're going to have, either keep the same amount of money, the same pot of money, you're going to do fewer streets if you do concrete, or you can do the same amount of streets in concrete, but you're going to have to add money to the pot.
I get it.
For right now.
Yep.
So that's kind of what the direction he would need.
Again, I was using kind of a Milton Street standard here. We just did, we're about to pave Milton with asphalt.
And we're assuming that we're not going to put curb and gutter and storm service?
We're going to put curb and gutter and not storm service. We'll put curb and gutter and modify drainage where it makes sense.
Okay.
It may not make sense in all locations.
But like in my neighborhood, I just have asphalt streets.
You may not be able to get curb and gutter in all these locations because of the drainage.
Okay.
Do you want any more than that? You have curbs?
No.
Curbs, you just have grass.
That's the same thing with Grace. They didn't, they decided because they had those bar ditches there and they were, you're going to have to fill those in, but curb and gutter and sidewalk.
And country stuff.
Do we incur more cost with the design build of concrete than we do the design build of asphalt, or is it not the same?
Generally speaking, it's with concrete.
But overall cost is between you and I.
I bet if you get one of those little streets that look nice with the concrete with curbs and everything, you know, the town, another street will go, hey, you know what? We can do that up here too.
I was going to ask the relevance of considering concrete if you weren't putting in the infrastructure that goes along with concrete. You know, the sidewalks, gutters or drainage and all that.
We're going to put the gutters in, we're going to have to modify the drainage in some locations to make it work.
So you're going to put the gutters in either way?
Well, where it works.
Where it works.
You might not put it in where it doesn't work. You can have a concrete street right there.
Yeah.
You can spray into a bar ditch.
I understand that.
Which is another kind of odd thing. I mean, they're done. Maybe you know it's full of concrete for this thing.
Didn't your edges of concrete streets-
They're asphalt.
Trying to think where we got that.
Yeah, concrete streets.
I mean, if you don't put curbs on the end of concrete streets, then they just start breaking off.
Not that, I think that's the long time.
Asphalt didn't break up like that.
Well, that, they have the, well, if you look on the highways and stuff, then they go from concrete to an asphalt, uh, solid.
My street has, is concrete, no curb and gutters, it's forty years old. My neighbor used to be a trucker for Consolidated Freight, bucking from a big truck down the block every day of the working week, forty years.
You just got to get the water out of the way.
And it looks fine.
Get the water out of the way, it works fine.
Street was built nice.
Okay, well, that's, talk about getting back to the same.
So, we got some other streets. Now, these here, we would be talking about doing in concrete within existing right of way, modified drainage as needed. We got a couple of these. Railroad Street between one twenty-one and Maine is in bad shape. And that actually gets quite a bit of traffic and a lot of it's from fire station up here, Old Town Station. And that's about a million dollars. And then there's South Keely.
Is that for asphalt or concrete?
That's currently asphalt.
I know, there's so much heavy traffic there, does that make sense?
That's why I said concrete.
So this, this number is concrete?
Yeah, see, he's showing concrete.
In this case, it would be concrete within existing right of way.
Twenty-five, that's how you do it.
It's amazing, you could build a million of them, concrete.
Yes.
Twenty-seven.
Million plus, give or take.
Can I ask a question? It's kind of off the point that we're talking about streets. Why would you asphalt Fox Avenue from High School to Purnell?
Why would I asphalt?
We just did-
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you?
I mean-
Yeah, it's connected on both sides with concrete and I'm thinking with the amount of traffic-
Lots of where to where?
From High School to Purnell. High School to Purnell, it's got brand new asphalt on it now. And I was just asking-
That was part of the drainage project.
Yeah, I was just saying-
It was what? It had to be asphalt to begin with.
It was asphalt. It was in the maintenance program of the Carol's operation.
It was just a maintenance, it wasn't a rebuild of the whole street.
It's already asphalt, so it's a maintenance project.
Instead of maintenance of existing, kind of overlay, I mean, it was just-
We tore it up, scarified it, put new asphalt down.
Oh, you're talking, okay, I was on the other side of the highway or something.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, that's actually very similar to what we're doing on Milton Street. And we did it on High School Drive too.
Crockett.
Crockett. And all the streets, because they're existing asphalt streets. We put curb and gutter, that's exactly what we're talking about. You got curb and gutter, new concrete curb and gutter, and asphalt streets. The other issue there was the funding source, which was CBVG, so we were trying to stay within the CBVG budget.
Now, the difference on that, on the Purnell and Crockett and all those, it already had the curb and gutter.
Yeah.
It was replaced.
Those locations, we replaced a lot of it, but they haven't.
So there wasn't, if you just put asphalt down, then you would have taken, and they might have some of it back to them.
And Purnell at that point was going to be asphalt until three or four months ago.
The original.
Okay, ignore it.
Okay, so, yeah, all this together, that's about ten million dollars. Uh, we've got another thing that's sitting around out there, it's Corporate Drive Extension. Oh, by the way, back on Keely-
Yeah, what?
Go ahead. There is some county bond money that's out there that we could access to do Keely. Uh, it's not sold yet and might be a year or two before it's sold, but it's theoretically out there. That's all I'm going to say about that right now.
I don't-
It was promised to us a few years ago and that's kind of easy.
It's part of these two thousand and seven programs.
I don't mean to hold this up, but South Keely, Milton Maine, currently asphalt. Why is it going to concrete?
Because of the heavy use it has.
Okay.
There's a lot of cut through traffic on that one. And you've got new development on the north side with the townhouse project.
Okay.
We've got concrete on the other side of Maine Street.
Whatever you have to the possible project, like in that one ways through there?
Well, we've pushed it off.
Right, but it's still potentially out there.
The direction from council was, let's go ahead and get the Mill Street Corridor project done. See what the traffic volume changes are and if it winds up being too heavy there, then we go to that cutback option. Okay, so Corporate Drive, this is the one that's using RTR money, regional toll revenue money for the most part. And there's about a three to four million dollar match. That's probably a low number, probably going to be higher. Dave was getting cost estimates on one little portion of that right now, they're going through the roof, but at some point, we're going to need a go, no-go decision on this as to whether or not we're going to actually put that extension in there. And if we do, then we need to reserve three, four million dollars for our match on that. The county's got another three or four million dollars to give another ten percent of the rest of its regional toll revenue. We have until 2019 to spend it all. Has not been designed, has not got any right of way, for the most part, got a little bit here and there, but we need to buy a lot more right of way, get over the river. And if we're going to do something about that, we're going to have to move fairly quickly to get it done by 2019.
This is the one that goes past the railroad park and-
And the curves to the east and crosses the river.
And it's only going to cost us ten percent of the cost of the project.
Yeah, and we actually have the other money-
No brainer, ninety percent.
In our pocket. But the only, no brainer, or the only other avenue would be whether you want to seek reassignment of those funds to some other project.
It's going to be four to five million progress, what's the cost?
It costs us four to five million, but it's going to be, you're saying basically it's going to be a fifty million dollar project?
I've got forty million in the bank from that.
They got that bridge.
I already have the money.
The bridge that-
From, from COG.
So, did that include the bridge?
It includes the bridge, yeah.
It's an easy deal.
Ninety percent, for ten percent investment, we get a ninety percent.
Yeah, and you'll get that no matter what. Question is, what do you want to do in Corporate, or do you want to do it somewhere else?
Like thirty-five?
Right, that's the thing, you're confusing.
I think, I think this here would just open up that part of town and we just have whole sorts of development.
That was the original concept.
Hey, I have a hard time cutting that off. I'd love, I mean, at some point, all the Castle Hills folks, I mean, that's Louisville, and you've got an east-west corridor there, now they go south, they don't go east-west because they don't have the option.
So I'm just raising the question, you know, if we want to go Corporate Drive, bingo, money's there, ready to go.
Do you have any other ideas where to do it?
The only one would be thirty-five. Try to buy more on thirty-five.
And I think this would definitely do better with-
Hold on just a second. When you say buy more, I hear what you're saying, I think it's, when you say buy more on thirty-five, you just sent us an email about the redesign of thirty-five going under Garden Ridge and keeping the old jug handle there at Garden Ridge, which is a real deterrent to that whole area there. Would that be enough money to have them redesign and put that back in the regional zone to go under, I mean, go over Garden Ridge and get rid of the jug handle?
I doubt it because the problem with going over was creating that long bridge on the main lane. It wouldn't, it wouldn't do that. This would be more of a-
That's a big deal right there. I don't know if y'all know, that's a big type of-
You might be able to buy some right of way, things like that to clear the-
Also, wasn't it, it was a whole bridge structure.
Then later.
It was a bridge structure almost from, just off the four oh seven, to the Lake Bridge. It raised up. Well, I mean, there's actually a little rail structure.
Kind of like that big structure on the bypass over there by Costco, it's so large. I think if you were to do it, that'd be great parking or something.
That is the idea of the project.
But, yeah, my, I know we're going to discuss it on the last day, but I'm really leaning to this because I could see this really opening up that part of town. And more of this infrastructure will benefit, I think, the city as far as, you know, long term development.
Yes, and the-
That's why we put it in there about ten years ago. We put it in there about ten years ago.
Reassignment of the COG funds would not necessarily be a slam dunk, easy thing to do because you've got to go through the whole process again. And the RCD has to, has to look at it and start having people look at that and go, well, maybe I'll try to stab at that money myself. So it's not necessarily something that happens fast. So then the final project would be the I thirty-five enhancements at four oh seven, that one is going to happen, and it happened fairly quickly. The match there is two million, however, Commissioner Mitchell has money for that, and I confirmed today that they'll be selling that money in the next bond program, or the next bond settlement. So the whole two million is gonna be taken care of.
So will be that total of sixteen million?
So the total would be sixteen million, not counting that, fourteen million without it, and that's about what we had.
Oh, sixteen million, counting that too?
Sixteen million, counting.
Oh, so it's fourteen.
So I'm down to fourteen million, and that's about what we're selling.
What was it, you showed on the first slide?
Thirteen.
Oh, fourteen.
Fourteen point two million.
A little more plan comes together.
And how much, did you have any that, that other two million from?
County, yeah, where's the budget?
The county that we're trying to get back?
About one million.
I thought it was two. Well, Keely and something else. Oh, okay, so it's one point five, so then they give me another. Okay, so you can pretty well see that would, if you take the two million off the sixteen, we're down to fourteen, our, the money that the voters voted for us to spend, the bonds, the, uh, the voters voted for us to buy bonds to do these improvements back in. Oh, three? And so we had to do it by, you showed me earlier, we had to sell them by.
Nineteen?
No, that's the other program.
But we're recommending do it on this.
We're ten years in, and when you get past ten years, it can get a little dicey, but.
And they recommend we go ahead and sell it all now, because of the cheap interest rate, and so. My recommendation would be to go ahead and do that, and what we may end up having, though, is we may end up having another million and a half, so we may be about two million dollars under, but it were we could do some more, which might help pay for some of those streets going to concrete versus.
Yeah, and we're, we wouldn't be building all of these in the next three hundred sixty-five days.
Sure you can.
I mean, it's gonna take a little bit of time to program and get them ready to go, so if the money, if some money comes in from another source and takes care of Keely, we've got to save the other million, million and a half dollars, and we could use that money for something else, or up the design standard on a street.
The one thing that I would like to see is, and Phil's obviously fit in this budget, is if you start, and maybe this is a difficult table to produce, but if you start shifting some of these streets to concrete, then what do you ask? You know, who, who does get that, or gets in the asphalt, but.
More delay.
But I'd like to, I'd like to see that, what that trade-off is.
Or we don't have to decide what streets.
Right, and you may end up, and I think it may end up, if we get some money from the county that we're working on, if we get some money from the county, we, and with the bond amount that we've been authorized by the voters to sell, maybe enough to do those streets, that he was talking about, even asphalt, to go ahead and do them in concrete, and not have to worry about it.
Our whole thing was to give you two options, and one, we're gonna get a little bit more visibility, let's put it that way, with the cost, it's not gonna be quite as good as the concrete street. Do more, but maybe not a lot.
Make more people happy, but for less money.
Yeah.
Perfect. One thing I recommend us do, though, as we're gonna do one of these streets, and I think we do this anyway, but send a notice to the residents on that street, what we're gonna do, we can even have a little neighborhood meeting for them, or what do they want to do, but show them what we're gonna do, and then when they say, why don't you do this, why don't you do that, we can say, we'd be happy to do this, but what you're gonna have to do is give up, you don't have to have a design there, but ballpark X amount in your front yard, and it's gonna cut into you, everybody's gonna need to donate that right of way, so that we can build through there. You see what I'm saying? But I think it'd be good to notify the residents, what you're gonna do before you go, and then if they got a something else they'd rather have done, we can at least talk to them and explain why or what.
Is, is there some number that we could look at, probably staff has something, that the road would be too close to the house? That if you, if you went in there and, and widened it a little bit further, and it put it within fifteen feet of the front door, and right now it's at twenty-five, fifteen to me is too close to the house, that it wouldn't even be, it wouldn't even be feasible to do that.
If they had a legitimate setback, we wouldn't want to try to get in their setback.
If, if you'll notice.
A lot of these places.
I got an older stuff.
Farmers Branch and Carrollton both did that.
Streets are a good example.
Those streets are bad, you go down there, they widen.
If you built a thirty-seven foot.
They've got fifteen, twenty-foot, I mean, it's hard enough for them to park a car. From there up to against their house there.
Last week, I'm going down the state highway between Jacksonville and Athens, somewhere out there. There was a building that, it's about four feet from, you couldn't park a car.
Yep.
Without being on a state highway. And, and you couldn't paint that building, it would take too much paint to paint.
That's one of the reasons Milton, we did on Milton is what we did, because you know how Milton looks before, and some of those houses are probably less than twenty feet away from the old street.
Yes.
Well, if you tried to do a thirty-seven foot back-to-back standard residential street, you'd probably be a house, actually.
Hellfire Department's got those little TV's now.
But I, I would say, we, we could identify those areas, and we wouldn't have to look at those.
Right.
And we could move forward with them, I think, that, it wouldn't even be an option to put a wider street in.
Well, in those locations, we won't be, it won't be much wider.
Yeah, most of them wouldn't be wider, but I'm saying if we notify them.
I'm talking sidewalks and all the others.
Right.
Okay.
Do you guys have any thoughts or comments on this?
I think we're moving in the right direction.
Everybody think you're okay with it?
Okay, so I've got the last part of this, but I think we probably ought to save that at this point. We'll try to work it back into the agenda later on this weekend.
Are you sure?
Yeah, the future capital financing questions, and Pago programs, and things like that, I need to get into that with y'all. But at this hour, I think it's probably be better to save it.
Everybody really wants to say one thing. The, the project on South Valley Parkway, and it's, it's where they're doing, replacing panels and sidewalks and all the other stuff. All I've heard is compliments, and I drive it three times, four times a day, and everybody I've talked to says, you know, we don't like the construction bothering our traffic level, but it looks great, they're doing it quick, and when they're doing the curbs and the sidewalks, it seems like within half a day, they're already finished and moving on down the road. And they are moving the constructions on with them, so they're not keeping it blocked off.
I know, who is it?
It's Ken Duke.
Ken Duke?
Rob. I have Chip Carroll.
That's a street that was built in nineteen four, no, much later than that.
Yeah, it was there in nineteen four.
The roads that put in there somewhere seventy-five to eighty.
Yeah, but I mean, the red, the rebuild was done, I want to say ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and right about that same timeframe as Edwards. Yeah, and so that's how many years, fifteen years?
Part of it was redone about.
We're doing major panel repairs on.
Part of it was done five to six years ago.
The concrete will buckle.
And it's breaking in the same place it broke the last time.
Yeah.
So, and they're redoing it now, and they're right there today.
Come look at my street.
I've, I've seen your city two years ago.
I'm not recommending doing concrete, but for asphalt, there would be.
How far is it?
City inspector approved.
The Van Hool versus the street.
His name was Eric, I mean, the initials were Eric.
Keep going, you call it a police tower.
Is, uh, is there to leave your books and stuff in here?
Yes.
Does this room be secure for now? So if you'll leave your, you might not want to leave your laptop, I mean, you can't go on there, but, uh, the room be secure, if you'll leave your books and stuff. Do you think else?
Eight thirty, is breakfast a break?
Eight thirty's break, and we'll start nine o'clock, probably at nine, okay?
Good.
Now, try to have everybody out here sometime around five, five thirty tomorrow afternoon, is that good?
Midnight, I'm good.
All right, we're done.
No, this is not closed session, I was trying to. Okay, um, yesterday, we talked about the immediate C I B plan, and the issuance of the remaining authority for general and additional bond over two thousand and three, and bond reduction. So that will tap out the remaining authority, the additional authority remaining at that point.
That was fourteen million?
That's fourteen million, roughly. Uh, so, uh, one of the question marks that is facing the city, going into the future, is how to finance its future capital needs, its major project needs. As you know, the park system, the park board, uh, has developed a master plan uh, that has substantial costs associated with it. I would anticipate that Louisville's street infrastructure needs in the future are not going to stop. At some point in time, we'll still need to make investments in the infrastructure of the streets, or not every street in town is at the five-star quality level, and over time, deterioration happens, and you need to make reinvestments. So again, there's capital needs associated with that. There's capital needs associated from time to time with special projects, you know, if you want to do animal shelters, fire stations, uh, facilities of one kind or another, uh, those all require funding. Historically, we've had a mix of financing mechanisms ranging from, uh, pay-as-you-go, or actually funds that are available at whatever point in time you need the capital project done, and a good, good example of this would be the animal shelter, which was financed out of cash. Sometimes we finance projects out of general obligation bonds, uh, best example of those are a lot of the street projects that we talked about yesterday, and street projects that have been done in the past, sometimes we finance facilities out of general obligation bonds. Uh, and by the way, in this discussion, I'm kind of leaving the whole utility side out there, I'm not really gonna talk about the utility capital needs, because that's a little bit different animal, so we're talking about more of the types of things that usually rely on the general fund to finance, whether it's through the operating rate or the debt rate. So the parks piece of this, of course, you have another financing tool in place, which is the four B sales tax. Uh, the downside of that is we have already issued debt in order to finance sort of the projects that are on the ground today, or tools, the library, the railroad car facility, and so it could be some time before that that fund's in a position to uh, do any more in terms of debt financing. So where does that leave us? Well, this first page, I don't have slides on this, and I can follow along in the book, this first page is an illustration of twenty-plus years, and what happens to our existing taxable assessed value of that timeframe? And what happens to our existing debt rate, remember you have an I M S rate or a debt rate that's separate from your operating rate. That current rate is eleven seven thirty-two. This chart assumes that we're going to issue that fourteen million in the next year, and that we're not gonna issue anything more. In other words, you're just gonna gradually amortize your debt down without adding anything more to it until it's quote gone.
For the next fourteen years.
Uh, it takes roughly fourteen, fifteen years, something, sixteen years, I think, basically. Yeah, because we're going to issue in twenty thirteen, issue sixteen, I'm not sure. So twenty thirty, roughly, it rolls off. So we just looked at a twenty-year period, which overlaps that. Uh, so you can see over time, if you look at that I M S column, over time, that I M S rate is gradually quote dropping. And that's because you're paying off your mortgage, or something, debt service is becoming less and less each year. Simultaneously, your taxable assessed value in the first column is going up a little bit, so you're seeing the relationship between those. Uh, if you look at the, the column that says difference, that's the rate difference between the eleven seven thirty-two and each year's reduced rate. If you take that rate and apply it to the A B, you come up with the final column. And that final column represents what would be generated in terms of cash if you were able to keep your rate at the eleven seven thirty-two level. In other words, you're taking the difference from each year, and you're putting it aside for your capital projects in the future. And when you add all that up over the twenty-seven, or the twenty-year period, you're at eighty-seven million. Now, the trick in all of that, and in any Pago program that we're talking about, is that you have to be able to have the discipline and the ability to set aside that difference in the tax rate. If you just spend it on something else, or if you drop the tax rate, because you want to drop the tax rate, then those funds don't get generated, and that's always the big problem. Is that over time, different councils wind up with different objectives, and at the time of the budget, you're trying to always balance other issues out, and there may be pressures in the budget from other sources, and so can any council maintain the discipline necessary to make that set aside each year to produce those savings, and set them aside in a pot of fun, a capital projects fund going into the future, and that's the million-dollar, eighty-seven million-dollar question. But if it did have that discipline, if it could do that, it would generate that kind of money over time.
Plus, once you get out of debt, the money that we would be spending for debt services and interest would also.
Yeah, you're earning interest, yeah, that's cool. So, uh, in theory, it's, it's something that can produce a sizable amount of money. Now, whether that amount of money is enough for you to do whatever you want to do, uh, that's another question, and it may be a question that we need to kind of let the twenty twenty-five committee talk about. This afternoon, when we talk about the twenty twenty-five committee, we're gonna have some suggestions as to committee structure, and one of the possibilities is that you have a committee that's looking at how to deal with infrastructure in the future, and how to finance it in the future, what type of infrastructure needs to be done, what's the prioritization of the park plan, and how do you go forward in the future, and whether or not bonds are something that you want to contemplate, whether you have some bonds, some pay-as-you-go, how do you structure a program like this to go into the future? Uh, one other thing you have to be aware of on something like this, let's just say you did have the ability, and, and everybody was gung-ho about taking that incremental tax rate and setting it aside for capital projects. When you shift the tax rate from debt service to operating, and that's essentially what you would be doing, you expose yourself to the potential for a rollback election, depending on the relationship between the revenue that you have shifted and the taxable assessed value that you're giving to. So that rollback calculation is at eight percent or something like that, or something these days. If you have more than eight percent, uh, increase in your operating revenue for one year, then the next, then there can be a rollback petition submitted to you, and you can be, have, forced to have an election, at which the voter could decide whether or not to roll the tax back to the eight percent level.
Doesn't Senator Patrick have a bill in for five percent?
I wouldn't surprise him, I haven't seen it. Every year, there's, there's, there's those types of efforts to try to roll that back. They don't take into account that you might already have that tax, it's just in a different pot compared to the operating pot. Uh, so that's one of the things that, again, complicates one of those programs going forward, it's not your fault, it's not the voter's fault, it's just the way the system works, and it can create a lot of difficulty in executing a program like this to its full potential. Because, again, when you're, when you're faced with that, chances are, you know, most councils have said, eh, I don't think we want to go up past eight percent. And you're starting to carve money out of the program, so I wanted to make that one clear.
Two, doesn't that also assume that your expenses are staying within your projection at the entire time? If you have unexpected expenses or unexpected mandates to be done, then you either have to raise the tax rate to accommodate that, or dig into that savings fund.
Yeah, that's one of those budget pressures that I was talking about, that happens, you guys have faced them many times before, something comes along that creates pressure on your budget to deal with, and you deal with it by saying, well, you know, that, that Pago program, we'll just put a little bit less in there this year, next year. Put a little bit less in next year, and then all of a sudden, over time, it winds up getting rotted. We have actually done that, uh, we have now actually got that close where the Pago program for streets and drainage was
eight years ago.
Seven, eight years ago, if you recall, in two thousand and seven, eight, nine, where we had that three-point-two million, or whatever it was, in the general fund for Pago, the very first thing we started cutting, when the, you know, things got tight, was that program. It got down into the one-point-five or six-million-dollar range, I think, before we started building it back up. So that's, again, one of those budget pressures, so that eighty-seven million at bottom, that's, that's a hypothetical number. It's, it's based on a lot of things happening that may or may not happen, and so, uh, that's one of the realities you just have to kind of keep in mind. Uh, the next page, again, is just the, the, that's sort of the projection, again, assuming that you are issuing the rest of that fourteen million, you don't have to worry too much about that, because, uh, I mean, that's what we're recommending. We do have the option, I wanted to tell you, that you don't have to issue fourteen million next, or this coming year, you can spread it, and Jason's done following two pages, assuming that you spread it out over three years, and you can see some differences in the, in the Pago program accordingly, but I think that, uh, again, the recommendation is to strike now while the interest rates are low, and we think we can do that, to structure this bond issuance, so that your debt rate is not affected in this next year.
There is a timing of it also involved, isn't there? That it has to be spent by, you're talking about the ten-year, that was over, ten years ago.
The G O bonds?
Mm-hmm.
Well, not really, um, historically, the authority, that's an interpretation by the Attorney General. You know, they start looking, when the authority was voted on longer and longer and longer ago, they begin to wonder, well, is there really that authority from the current voters, or is that, you know, something that the voters in nineteen thirty approved? Um, that's an extreme kind of example, but we're still okay.
All right.
But again, financially speaking, it takes four sessions to go through. Uh, if you'll turn to the chart that, uh, looks like this, city's general obligation bonding capacity in the next twenty years. Got a green, heading bullet top.
Nice page.
That just shows you what you could issue on that same time. Now we're, now we're saying, that's Pago program aside, what if you decided to go with bond financing, one hundred percent? How much could you do? How much could you do over the next twenty years, same twenty-year period? And you'd see that the bond capacity is about a hundred and nine million, let's say.
So that's where we would be paying back over the time.
Now, that's not you would be issuing. Now, what you'd be paying back would be more than that.
Yes.
But this is just what you would be issuing for your finance projects.
The other way, we wouldn't have any interest, it would be...
Correct. You'd be, you'd have eighty-seven million dollars to finance projects on one, you have a hundred and nine million to finance projects on the other. The cost of capital aren't even reduced anymore.
That's my point of view.
So that's just to illustrate, again, what that bond capacity is on the general obligation side. So, again, this question of how much bonds, how much Pago is one of those ongoing, everlasting dilemmas and policy questions for a council, for a municipality and its citizens to decide upon. And we're kind of at the cusp of where that discussion needs to take place because we're at the end of the two thousand and three program, and some decisions need to be made as to what we want to do in the future, what we want to do about that park plan. Short of this, there's not a whole lot you could do, and Don is going to walk through this next part of the presentation, which was what we gave to the park board. But right now, our hands are kind of tied over there on the 4B side. Do you want to use general obligation bonds for parks, even though you have a 4B fund for parks? So there's a policy question there as well. And of course, the park board is kind of not sure what they want to do because they're not sure how far the council wants to go on some of these issues. So with that, I want you to kind of get familiar with the park board presentation, what they're looking at, kind of the same topic, just their side of it, how do they fund their little master plan? Not little, but big.
Yeah, just to refresh your memory, the park master plan, phase one is seventy-seven, is seventy-seven million. Phase two is fifty-three million for a total of a hundred and thirty million. And then on top of that, you have the crow master plan at seventy-six million. And Claude asked the park board, or our park director, to look at that plan and to prioritize that plan.
And because, remember, all added up is over two hundred million. Well, two hundred million compares to the hundred and nine million that you could finance through bonds, it compares to the eighty-seven million that you could finance through...
Savings.
Savings.
And that's, that's all of it.
That's all of it.
That's everything.
Well, it is. Right, right.
Correct. It's a worst-case scenario, that's all.
And that is why you said last year to retreat, okay, that's a good vision, but we need to have something that's a little bit more...
Kind of have to have roads to drive to the park on occasion, or sewer lines.
Correct. So we've been working with the park board to try to come up with a more phased, realistic approach.
So Bob came to us and said, the thing that the park board was really struggling with was what is out there and what is available. And so Brenda and I met with them, and the reason he had a really pretty little Christmas tree on the park page is we did this at their Christmas party.
The key page, keep turning the page, on the same, same, same table.
So we talked with them about the different funding options. Certainly, cash, again, as Claude said, is an option, whether it be from the 4B fund or the general fund, bonds, certificates of obligation. And of course, we're dealing with the park board, so we've spent some time educating them on what a certificate of obligation is versus a general obligation bond. COs are not voted, and we have had two CO packages sold against the 4B fund for twenty-three-point-six-nine million in two thousand and four and eighteen-point-one-eight million in two thousand and seven. And then the other option would be what could be sold through a GEO bond program that would have to be approved by the voters and paid through the debt rate. And we did explain to the park board what the council policy has been over just about as long as I've been with this city, and that is to keep the tax rate flat. So that we're, when we look at selling debt, we try to keep that debt rate no higher than point eleven seven thirty-two for that total rate of forty-four oh two one.
Policy's been to keep it flat unless you're able to reduce it, because when we passed that two thousand and three program, the tax rate for debt is about thirteen cents.
Excellent.
Now it's eleven. Well, did we set aside that two cents for future capital projects? Heck, no. We set aside for reduce the tax rate. So, again, you've got to have some kind of a policy framework that's as much as possible going to force that to occur.
Well, the key point there, though, is reducing the tax rate. I think that was more what we did instead of speeding. Do you go out and speed it and reduce the tax rate?
Absolutely.
Which is always a kind of a problem.
Last GEO bond election we held was in November of two thousand and three, that's at sixty-eight-point-seven-two-five million dollar package that Claude mentioned earlier. And we did remind the park board, when we did that GEO bond election back in two thousand and three, we literally removed all of the park projects from that election primarily because of the passage of the 4B sales tax. And so there certainly may be an idea among our voters that 4B sales tax is there to fund your park projects. Unfortunately, as we just said earlier, at this point, it's fairly tacked. This next chart is the same one that Claude just showed earlier, and that is the maximum dollars that we could actually issue through the bond program through twenty thirty-three. That's that same one hundred and nine million that he just showed you. And then we talked about available 4B sales tax funding over twenty years. So this next chart, Jim, let me just look at that. We looked at it first, for the park board, what would be available if we just did cash funding for your projects? So first, we looked at their fund balance, what's available right now in the 4B fund balance. And you see that number in two thousand and fourteen of six-point-nine million. Now, that still is keeping certainly that reserve, and we do maintain twenty percent, twenty percent reserve in the 4B fund. And then you start seeing the numbers that would be available for cash funding projects after that. Remember, your 4B fund pays debt rate, debt, it also pays O and M. It operates your pools, it pays for accrues, it pays for some library operations, but this is available cash that's left for these, for the following years. Up to, if you look at two thousand and twenty-five or two thousand and twenty-four, you see that number jump from nine-hundred-twenty-five thousand up to two-point-eight million. That occurs because you are selling, you're finishing off your debt payments for those programs that were sold earlier, the 4B capital programs.
Which were basically the library, the pools, and the railroad street.
That's it, correct. So over a twenty-year period, you're able to generate thirty-nine-point-eight-seven million dollars with cash funding, through 4B funding. Just flip over to the second model. This is available cash funding plus an additional nineteen million dollar issuance in two thousand and twenty-five, because remember, you're getting that old debt paid off. And so, again, you see those same numbers, starting in two thousand and fourteen at six-point-nine million, and then you hit two thousand and twenty-five and you issue additional debt. So over twenty years, now you're able to, with those combined cash funding and debt sale, forty-five million. We then talked with the park board a little bit about our two thousand and twenty-five vision plan, and when we believed at that time we would be kicking off the program, and how their overall process would fit into the vision two thousand and twenty-five, that certain quality of life programs would be a major discussion point with the committees that were appointed, and decisions in direct direction would be achieved through that visioning process. And a part of that two thousand and twenty-five process would also be a GEO bond program consideration. And then Claude told us that we could actually give them some what-ifs. Again, they were looking at, if we're going to lay out this program, what is some of the maximum dollar we can look at for each year? And so the first what-if model was, what if we can issue thirty million dollars for the GEO bonds starting in two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-year bonds? How much would we have each year? And so that just gave them some targets to play with as they tried to lay out the program.
Didn't want to give them that.
We may.
Bob made me.
Yeah, we may. We actually may.
It was really designed for them to just have something to grab a hold of, because they were just having so much difficulty trying to figure out how to prioritize things without having some kind of a external force. So we said, okay, let's just hypothetically say, if you had thirty million dollars, what would be, what would these projects fall out? So that's...
And then if you go to mile four, you see that Claude really got kind of wildly crazy and told them that they could look at sixteen million.
I just wanted to see the difference.
So we laid out that option. And then the fifth model is actually the same discussion that, chart that Claude showed you earlier, where we would be using the city's available cash funding over twenty years, if the city didn't generate any more GEO debt at your cash flow. That's it.
I believe the first one was Laker Screw, the second was It's a Wonderful Life, and then this one, I think, was Cheese the Grinch.
It was all about Merry Christmas.
Yeah, we said Merry Christmas, and they fed us well, and we gave them this news. And they actually thought we received it very well, and got a good heart, were working hard on it, they're getting projects.
So, again, that policy question's out there. I don't expect you to follow that or give us policy direction in that retreat, because I think the best venue for that is the two thousand and twenty-five process, where you take time to talk about it for the citizens, take time to talk about it with the boards that you might have, just based on library, park board. Get that input, look at what you're wanting to do and how you want to do it, and then maybe base the decisions after that process. And at the end, for the short term, we're okay, because we're going to rock and roll from two thousand and thirteen, and just let those projects roll as quick as possible, and then we'll go forward.
Claude, can I ask you a question? You made, just made a statement about talking to the parks board and the library board.
As part of the two thousand and twenty-five process.
Okay. I was talking about the funding part of it. Now, it's my understanding that no longer will 4B funds be used for new library projects?
Yeah.
It's only for maintenance and operation?
The legislature cut out the use of 4B funds for certain...
Learning centers.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a lib, same as library?
There's a change in the law. Yeah, learning centers is what we use to cover the cost of library. And then the law changed just after the elections.
So now it's more pure parks.
More apartment.
Yeah. But what you did before is okay, you just can't...
You can maintain it and operate it.
Right, right.
You won't build another library.
It's not on here. We're talking about parks, but it's not on this. I'll talk to you about it in a minute.
I think what Claude's reading there about the two thousand and twenty-five committee and legislation is really important here. You know, we need to hear from the citizens in what they want and how quickly they want it, how long they're willing to wait for a certain project, and the prioritization that you're getting, I think, is very crucial. And when we do the two thousand and twenty-five, I'd recommend we do prioritizations also. But it's just like, you know, when you first go buy your first house, if it's a, we'll just say, what's our average median house here, a hundred?
Hundred.
Let's say it's a hundred. A hundred thousand dollars, most people, when you first buy your first house, don't have a hundred thousand dollars, they don't. So if you wait until you get the cash to pay for that without having to borrow a mortgage on it, now that hundred thousand dollar home's a hundred and fifty thousand. And you still don't have the money to buy it. There's, so there's a fine line there that you have to make sure, you know, what you want to do, which, what we've been doing lately is paying off debt. We've been paying off debt through our capitalization, capitalization fund, if we refinancing, we've been using that money to pay down our debt. In fact, we've paid down about ten percent, which is really pretty scary when you look at it. So I think that's the fine line you've got to decide. You want to try to pay, and you did, is you go, but how many projects do you want to delay? And then when you do delay those projects, you've got to tell those people why you're delaying their project and why you're putting someone else's project in front of them. And that gets back to, when we were talking about the streets the other day, yesterday, we were talking about the streets. You've got those projects on the streets, if you don't, if you do that, there's going to be cash basis. You've got to tell some of those people, we're not in the streets right now, we're in the neighbor's street, but we're not in there.
Well, just to expand on that, my point of view is, like, in two thousand and nine, when I looked at our debt liabilities only with the CO, GEO, and RV bonds, that of the two-hundred-and-fourteen million in liabilities, fifty-four million of that was going to be in interest payments alone. So whether you borrow it upfront and get it all done, you still end up paying off so much more than you could have saved that money upfront. So, yes, pay-as-you-go is a disciplined area, as Mr. King mentioned. If we have the income, which we do, to pay that off and go through it, you know? The thing is, you know, there was a time in this country where, when the government ran out of money, it stopped doing different projects and continued when it had more money. I, you know, the Washington Monument's a great example. First half is a lighter color stone than the upper half, because they stopped building it when it got halfway up. And when they continued building it, the quarry that they had gotten the original grant it from was already depleted. So, I mean, that's evidence of why that happened. Yes, that can happen, and, yeah, I would like that all to be in color. But, you know, that's where I would like to see us get back to, is, you know, at that twenty-five percent or thirty percent of that money that goes for interest over the life of a loan, if you look at the total amount that we're paying back, I think we'd be better off ahead with a little bit of discipline and pay-as-you-go, because over that timeframe, we're going to have that money saved and used and not spend that extra money.
So I, I, in the big picture, I don't disagree, but what, like, on water and sewer, which...
Don't get me wrong, sometimes we have to learn.
You don't get the use of that. You've got to wait till you got the money. You can't pay, here's a million dollars out of a forty million dollar project, and then do another million the next year, and just work on it a little bit at a time.
I understand.
And we're not building a monument. You know, water and sewer.
Oh, that's a monument, it's a monumental task.
No, 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 no monument is something that you don't need. Water and sewer, you have...
I was playing a joke on the words, it's a monumental task, but...
Yeah.
Look, the thing, what I'm saying is, is if we have to borrow, we have to. But there's a time where if we don't have to spend, we save. Let's say we didn't have any major projects coming up. If we start saving and building up a bank, then when something happens, like having to rebuild something, we will have the money in the funds. Some people call it a rainy day, some people call it, you know, mounting the bank to spend on future projects. Lowering the tax may not be the answer. It might sound good, but if we could keep that tax rate the same without raising it and get ahead...
See, I've never agreed on leaving the tax rate the same.
I mean, lowering, I don't want to lower it.
You don't want to lower it?
No, I mean, if we didn't have to lower it to pay, once we get out of debt, if we can save some money by keeping the tax rate the same, or maybe, in other words, like this eleven cents, once we pay off our debt, it would be nice to lower it some, but the eleven cents would all go away because it goes to debt, that's what debt it gets for. Then we raise our base up a little bit, so we'd have a net decrease of maybe eight cents.
The model I would look at, you would never run out of projects, you would never run out of debt.
No, we won't.
It's just a continuing deal. And at some point, you've got to replace what you have. There is a big assumption that everything was always here, the highways were always here, and the state's got into that, that deal too, and so has the Penn and Pre. You don't have to fix anything. You don't have to build new. Things don't change, things don't deteriorate. Airports have to be redone.
That's not my view, I'm sure that you know.
I'm just saying that that is a view out there, and they're saying the same thing. We should pay cash, pay as we go.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to get these projects done, we could either do it with the money that we have, or we could do it with the money that we borrow and pay interest on top of that money that we...
How would we do it, paying as we go?
Takes time, takes time, it does take time.
And you would do a small piece of a water tower, and leave the water tower a tenth of the way done.
No, no, that was...
So we would borrow the money.
You'd wait to start your water, to start your water tower.
That's also, you would have the benefit of the water.
Right, right away. But then again, your money goes that much further. If we were out, let's just say we're out of debt, and I'm just, example I'll use is that we're paying twenty-five percent of the money that we bring in to interest alone. If we were out of debt, and let's assuming all the other cities do the same thing, then what I'm saying is, is that our money would go twenty-four percent further than our neighboring cities, because we're not spending it on interest.
You know, it depends on the change in the... You know, it depends on the change in the cost of projects over time and the change in interest rates over time. If you borrow and finance a project today at three percent or whatever you do, it's one thing. And if you borrow and finance something at fourteen percent on twenty twenty five, it's completely different simultaneously or similarly. If you build a project today and it costs a hundred thousand dollars and then you wait and you build it tomorrow, it costs a hundred thousand dollars as a cost associated with that. So we don't know what interest rates are going to be in the future. We don't know if they're going to be higher or low. Probably cost of materials. A whole lot lower, but they may be higher. And this could be a good time to issue debt comparatively speaking because the cost of capital is so much lower. If you look at a three, three and a half percent today of interest rate versus a three percent inflation rate, the difference is really only half a percent there. So, but that relationship's never going to be static. It's always going to be changing over time.
And I agree with that, but like in two thousand nine, we paid almost twenty million dollars to our debt payments. If we didn't have that twenty million dollar debt payment, let's say this is zero, Rudy, right here. If, if we'd have to pay the twenty million, we'd basically save twenty million. And in reality, that's like a forty dollar, forty million dollar difference of where we are than where we could be.
And what wouldn't we have as a result of that?
You still have it, it's just delayed. It's called delayed gratification, if you want to call it.
So we'd have, we'd have some, we'd have roads that would have holes in them because we had to delay repair. We'd have water facilities, pump stations and lift stations that wouldn't be in place. So we'd be violating Texas state law.
Well, we'd never do that.
Yeah, no, that would never happen. So I mean, some of these pressures come external as well.
Yeah, I mean, the best example would be park, the four B fund because.
No library or water parks.
We wouldn't have.
We'd have a road park.
We'd have a road park.
Yeah, you wouldn't have those to bet.
Well, that's coming from four B funds. That's.
Well, but it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Those were debt financed and so they would get financed and adjournment, adjournment was done as quickly as possible at relatively low rates, basically. Particularly when you factor in the interest rates, there's an expectation that if I'm paying taxes today and that there are improvements or, because they're driven by maintenance or they're driven by desire or driven by population growth, if I'm paying taxes today, I don't want to fear that my money's going to sit for twenty years, at which point I'll be dead and then eventually you're going to build that. Because that's my tax money and I want to see my tax money put to work so that I can benefit. I'm not building the city for the next generation. I want to keep the next generation in mind, but, but the city you're building today is for the people who live here today. There's another political dynamic that you sometimes see in that regard as you're trying to save funds up and build a sizable fund to deal with capital projects that sometimes you get criticized for, how could you got all that money to sit there? How could you just don't reduce the taxes and?
Yep. A little education on, we're not wasting money on interest. The thing is, is the point it should come down to is how much money do we want to have in our, what, what would be basically be our zero balance, our emergency fund, so to speak? Tornado hits Lewisville, what are we going to do, man? I mean.
Big family. That's what we're going to do.
Yes, but I'm saying is we're still going to have expenses. We're still going to have expenses.
The balance.
Okay, well, I wanted to get that out there. So that's what we talked about, twenty twenty five this afternoon. That's another one of those little thoughts in the back of your mind. So we're basically done. We, we plan to join for lunch and.
Uh, yeah. So the joint for lunch, what time, an hour and a half or what?
We're supposed to start back at one thirty.
Start back at one thirty?
Yes, sir.
Good thing you come to the feedback.
Uh, concrete versus.
The fourteen million?
Yeah.
Fourteen million?
And, yeah, financing. Fourteen or thirteen? Fourteen, thirteen. You want me to just kind of walk through again to the beginning?
Or just, you know, just whatever the highlights, yeah, definitely great.
Okay. So we're in tag four again. Just as a recap, what we're talking about doing is going ahead and issuing fourteen point two one zero million dollars in bonds for twenty thirteen, which would happen in the next couple of months. It'll be real quick, April or later for you and your partner. The intent would be to maintain our debt rate at this current level. So, yeah, jump in.
Why are we going with bonds instead of certificates?
Well, you have the authority to issue the bonds.
The certificates are cheaper, right?
No, they're the same. Let me kind of talk a little bit about that since there's some discussion about that. A general obligation bond is an instrument that is, a borrowing instrument, that is authorized by a vote. In other words, you had an election and you said, I want to issue some of the bonds for streets, whatever your proposition is, and the voters approved that. Voters have said, city, we are okay with the issue of those bonds and they're a general obligation bond because they are backed by the full faith and credit of the city, which means that no matter what, you're going to pay them back. You'll raise the tax rate to whatever level you have to and pay them back.
Correct.
A certificate of obligation is virtually the same thing with one exception, and that is there is no filter. They are essentially the city council exercising its authority in the home rule city to say, we need to finance this project and we need to issue debt to do so. We're still backing it with full faith and credit of the city and you issue the debt. Because you're still backing the bonds the same way.
Yep.
They have virtually the same rate when you issue. Now, that's different than a revenue bond on the utility system or a revenue bond on a stormwater utility if you, if you want it that way. Or for that matter, a revenue bond on a four B or for a revenue source that you're trying to finance. A revenue bond, generally speaking, is not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. In fact, only by the revenue that are generated by that particular source. And so the bondholders have to weigh the risk there of being a little bit more than if they had that full faith and credit clinched. And so typically, the interest rates will look a little bit on the revenue bond compared to.
But we are not suggesting using revenue bonds.
No.
No, not for, not for this. This program is strictly the authority that is remaining.
He's talking about the general obligation bonds.
And the general obligation bonds too, not only the fact that they're, they're equal, is that you've got, you've got the backing and support of your citizens on the general obligation bond because they've already voted for it. When you're doing a CO, you're saying, eh, I'm just deciding we need to do that.
There's sometimes needs to be done, but.
It does. Sometimes it does have to be done since we had the election.
Somebody, I think Donna mentioned that some cities, what they do is they just issue COs when they need to issue for projects they see are needed. They'll never go to an election. Now, in this area, we tend to be more used to the elections. And of course, the school districts, virtually all of these go to on ballot box, the bond issuers for the schools and services. So again, that's what your authority is. And first off, we're recommending that you go ahead and sell it if the interest rates are so low. The projects we're talking about are Northwest Old Town, so you've got those street names there. Northeast Old Town and McKenzie Henry. And then we targeted those areas because of the original bond propositions and the material that was published at the time had those as projects that we were going to spend money on or areas that we were going to spend money on. There are some other projects, I didn't mention it yesterday, but there are some other projects that were part of that publication, part of those publications that have not been done. And it's largely because they've been done through other sources or there's not the need to do it as we anticipated back in two thousand three. For example, Spinks Road was on our list at the time. Well, we don't need to spend any bond money on Spinks Road because Spinks Road was completed with the cooperation of the county and the property, which is the property developers. It's a done project. We don't have to do any, we don't spend any money. Fox Avenue was done by DCTA, so we don't have to do anything there. Up in the Valley, there were some streets, Valley One subdivision, there were some streets that were part of the original proposition. But we wound up shortly after the bond election, spending considerable amount of money in that area doing panel repairs and extensive drainage repairs. And so the condition of those streets climbed up to the point where you don't want to just go in there and tear them up just because you have some money. They're basically where they need to be for the time being, and so you don't need to spend the money there. So really, what's left would be these Old Town areas in terms of that two thousand three proposition. And then any other streets that you might want to use the funds on. And of course, we targeted two others that were in the immediate area, Railroad Street and Keely Street, and feel like those as thoroughfares could definitely benefit from improvements. So.
And just heard the session, we might, we might be getting our money, original money from the county that was committed.
Keely.
Yeah.
And, and all these things we're talking about here, there's going to be no change from asphalt to concrete. We're replacing them just as what they are.
That's up to, that's up to the council, yeah. If y'all want to go ahead and upgrade those where possible to concrete, just tell us that's what you prefer.
What are you proposing?
We were proposing to go back to the asphalt standard with concrete curbing gutter primarily because you have a series of other streets that have been done the same way in that area. You mentioned yesterday, Fox, Crockett, High School Drive, that we just completed with an asphalt standard. We're about to complete Milton with an asphalt standard. So we were thinking that maybe that's the appropriate standard for those streets in Old Town. But if you want to, you know, change the direction and go to a concrete street in some or all of those areas, maybe it's not feasible in all areas, but we could do that on a case by case basis. We could certainly go that direction. No problem with that. Concrete, as we talked about last, last night, does tend to last longer with less maintenance costs over time. It's not maintenance cost free, but we can certainly go that route.
You just.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Well, Claude, you just made a comment, do an asphalt with concrete curb and gutter. If we have existing asphalt, not all the asphalt out there has existing concrete curb and gutter, so there would be an upgrade in that sense.
Yeah, the majority of these streets do not have curb and gutter. They have hard dishes.
Okay. Because when I was on CDPG, we had the same exact conversation, and I think Leroy's probably familiar with some of it as well, where, you know, where in the continuum are we? Are we just asphalt? Are we asphalt with concrete curb and gutter? Are we concrete with concrete curb and gutter? And, and.
We were just trying to maybe take the next step up because you were starting from a point where you basically had a substandard asphalt street with large drainage. You take it maybe the next step, not necessarily two steps up. But again, the concrete, certainly maintenance people and Steve's folks and public service have no issue whatsoever. They probably prefer to have more concrete in some of those streets than the alternative. And again, of course, we were trying to maximize how many, how much we could do with funds available. So because of differential in the initial cost expenditure, you can give us maybe a little bit more down with asphalt.
Steve, how much time would it take to come up with both models and kind of give us a, we're going to get this much done with concrete versus this much with asphalt and kind of big curb and gutter?
It won't take very long.
And, and add one more thing to that report. Expected lifetime, you know, maintenance cost over a period of ten, fifteen years, if you can just estimate.
I think all of that's the request I made yesterday when I asked this question.
You can kind of look at it.
Is together is what I've already asked.
You can kind of look at it right there. I mean, it's just pretty simple. They said it's approximately twenty-five percent more go concrete. So now you're ten million, now you're at twelve point five million. I think we're going to get a million from the county to do Keely, so now you're, you're costing basically a million and a half more.
I think what I need is a graphic.
I'm just saying ballpark. You were just talking about ballpark. That's, that's real simple to say. I think too, what's key on this is we know the five rest is what we're getting ready to do before we do it.
Yeah.
And my other question is, how difficult would it be to get, and not a design, not a total design, but just an approximation of if they wanted to go to, they don't have curb gutter, want to go to curb gutter sidewalk, come and try it away, they'd have to do. Can you not just estimate that anyhow?
For our viewing purposes?
No, 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 for these streets.
Oh, and as we were moving forward on some project?
Right.
Well, we can go down each street and take a look at it and come up with a ballpark idea as to what can be done on it, you know, getting into.
And that's what I was thinking.
Each street's going to be different. I mean, on one street, you might be able to just get the road in with the curb and gutter and that's it.
Right.
Next street, you might be able to get a road in, curb and gutter, and one sidewalk and one side. Next street, you might be able to get two sidewalks.
Right. And I wasn't, overall, I was talking about per street or each end of the street. And then I think it's key to inform the people, look, if you think you want this, that's what it's going to take. You're going to have to dedicate this right away and a hundred percent of it, you're going to have to dedicate it.
Too heavy of a credit.
Correct.
Is that on block by block?
Well, it's street by street. You could do one block and then after the next block.
Some cases, it's almost block by block. Streets will change.
Well, you'd have to do it where it worked. I mean, you couldn't have wide street and narrow street.
No, you don't want to do that. I'm just saying, you have to look at the whole thing.
Area.
But again, concrete, as mentioned here, we are using concrete on Railroad and Keely primarily because of the thoroughfare. But the other factor that's involved here, a residential street doesn't carry the traffic load that a thoroughfare does. And so we can usually tolerate the asphalt standard a little bit better than if you were to try to do it on a thoroughfare. We used to have asphalt on Fox on the west side of the interstate. That's the project of DCTA. And it was asphalt between thirty-five and.
So we have.
Valley Parkway, right? Yeah. And it functioned well, but it did require frequent overlays. We went, we'd probably go in and grind and overlay once every ten years. But it's also far more subjected by, or affected by seasonal and soil changes. Asphalt. Oh, asphalt. Well, it's, they're both affected. Well, David referred to yesterday.
Concrete.
Concrete's got a rigidity factor that resists that to a point. But heat and concrete, you see the spalling and buckling and cracking that it can have virtually overnight. And some of that's because of the expansive natures of the technical aspects of the concrete itself, heating, cooling, heating, cooling, heating, cooling, and it cracks. And so they both have pros and cons. Asphalt can be relatively easy to overlay and complete a very nice smooth new surface fairly frequently without a whole lot of effort. Concrete requires a lot more effort, pouring, disposal, demolition, saw cutting panels, things like that. So there's a, and I don't know the formula for that is all that fixed. I think a lot of it is localized and is subject to very, very local conditions. In our neighborhood, we have very expensive soil. It's not as bad than, for example, the Old Town area, but it's kind of a matter of degree.
And there will be some neighborhoods that don't want concrete curb and gutter streets. They just want the asphalt. They just want their street repaired as nice new asphalt. Without curb and gutter, you won't keep the base.
So again, in summary, the idea is to go ahead and issue fourteen million and spend that, those funds as far as they'll go, as far as you want them to go, basically the Old Town area and for those free thoroughfares, Corporate Drive, Keely, Railroad, possibly Keely coming off because the county might take care of it.
But that, I think we will need to make a decision on tomorrow so we can get staff direction so that if we decided to go ahead and do that, then we can go ahead and get the bonds and compare it to be so.
All right. All right. Let me give you a little bit more information. We've been focused on this area. Those aren't the only streets in town. There's other areas in town. Dayton's not here, but he has a, it's like a race thing. He has this list, and then he has the list below that, and he has the list below that. Uh, for example, the Indian Oaks neighborhood, uh, is a neighborhood that was built with mostly, uh, certainly a good portion of that is asphalt and bar ditch. In fact, I think that was done pursuant to a variance at the time. Developer requested and received variance. And those streets buckle deep pretty frequently. And so that's one of the areas that's on his list is to go in there at some point and retrofit that area with bar ditch or with curb and gutter and adequate drainage.
But partial bar ditch as well. Then I don't think that included a full, closed pipe drainage system.
And bear in mind in this whole decision, the issue of curb and gutter and drainage is also subject to local conditions or whatever that street is and how it drains. We may not be able to get curb and gutter everywhere or certainly a drainage system that substitutes for a full blown drainage system in all locations. If you remember on Milton, what we wound up doing was sheet draining a lot of the drainage from, I don't know if that's Elm or Samuel, maybe it's South, to essentially intercepting the Purnell system. Some of the drainage that was north of Samuel, we installed an interceptor, a cross-street drainage interceptor that takes it to the east toward Charles Street. And that's a good example of a modified system. There is no pipe under the ground on Milton Street, but you're taking the drainage to this point in one fashion and to this other point in another fashion. And that's what you attempt to do on the majority of these Old Town streets. You may not be able to do that in all locations, depending on how much water you're talking about where it's going to be. It's going to be kind of case by case.
That get you, Leroy?
Yes.
That get you, Leroy?
Thank you very much.
May I ask any other?
Okay, we're going to be sure we, let's see, breakfast speed start at 8:30. We'll start at 9:00, 8:00 in the morning. We are now adjourned.